I want to call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening of December 14th, 2021. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask if you would, please stand with me and I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then an invocation for council.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's kind and gracious, Heavenly Father. We come grateful for the blessings that you have provided in our lives through this day and ask that you be with us this evening as we come to do the city's business. We thank you for the calling that you've placed upon our lives as those that serve the public and help us to always be mindful of that calling to servant leadership. We come during this holiday season of blessings but know that there are many in our community that suffer from homelessness and lack of food and lack of shelter and care, in some cases, medicine, many things, and so help us to be mindful of those around us that find little joy in this time of year. But we pray, Lord, that we'll minister to them as best we possibly can during this holiday season and throughout the year. Guide and direct us in all that we say and do this evening and this will be accomplished in your son's name. Amen. We set aside time at the first of each meeting for a public forum. This is an opportunity for those that wish to address council in regards to an issue that is on the agenda and we have some folks that would like to appear this evening. We have four speakers that have come. We allow adequate time for that. Typically, what I would ask is that you be mindful of those that are still yet to come, both in your time and in your comments. We will allow up to five minutes for you to bring before us your concerns in regards to the issue at hand. With that, Mr. TJ Swift is the first to appear tonight. Sir, if you would come to the podium and state your name and address for the matter of the record.
TJ Swift, 104 West Moreland Avenue, Greer. Good evening, y'all. I'll get to the project at hand directly, but first I'd like to address a bigger issue, that being the ongoing blatant misuse of the design review district zoning. The DRD, Section 519, 1, intent. Intent of the DRD district is to provide a method for inventive design to be accomplished and to permit development that cannot be achieved through conventional zoning. So this special zone was meant to accommodate unique projects, not large multifamily developments. That's what we have the RM1 and RM2 districts for. That's what the zoning's for. But that's not what we've been passing by and large here. DRD, Section 616 dot 1, states, "Before the planning staff makes a recommendation to the planning commission, it shall be determined the following." Right at the top, "The spirit of the zoning district shall not be violated." May not be violated? No. It shall not be violated. That's stated clearly. Y'all are violating not only the spirit, but the letter of that zoning law. And I'll put it to you. I'm going to cite Victor Mill, which is already going up because it's possibly the most egregious violation that's happened so far. They're all, as far as I'm concerned, in violation, but that one is way outside. Section 8 of 616-1 says, "The proposed development will harmonize with existing developments." Well, folks, Victor Mills', Millhouses. If someone can explain, and no one at the zoning committee could, explain to me how four, four-story apartment buildings and a few townhouses smushed in because they had a little extra room fit in with Millhouses, I'd love to hear that. This is the most important thing right here because this comes up on every DRD, every DRD that comes before this council or the Planning and Zoning Committee. "The design shall be such that additional traffic will not be a burden on existing streets." Now, folks, it doesn't say that the streets that they create will meet city standards. That wouldn't help in this case right now because what we're talking about are developments for which this city's never seen before. So our city standards don't, our streets don't meet that, even if they did. But that's not what it says. It says it will not be a burden. Now, I'd like to hear somebody explain to me how that development at Victor Hill is not going to be a burden to those folks that live up in there. Or that all the development that's been passed up on Brushy Creek is not already a burden because it is. That's what we hear all the time. Y'all are in violation of the spirit and the letter of the DRD.
One minute, sir.
Sir?
One minute. You've got one minute more.
The DRD also states that the commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, may impose additional or more restrictive requirements, like perhaps, "Go ahead and build your townhouses, but you cannot tear down a 120-year-old historic building to do it." That was within their power and it was within your power to enforce that. That didn't happen. That did not happen. Y'all are in violation of the spirit and the letter of the DRD. And you're violating the best interest of the people that elected you all to represent us. I see a lot of representation for developers. I've read the mayor's support for the fellow that wanted to build down here on Main Street and get a tax credit. I read that, but I haven't read any, anything that supports the people that y'all are elected to represent. Now, time after time, these rooms have been filled with people, all right?
Patricia Swift, 104 West Moreland Avenue. And I'll give my time to Tom.
You will forfeit your time if you have nothing to say. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Eddie Hamlin.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
She didn't forfeit her time, she gave it to me.
No. She can use it if she would like to. We'll entertain her petition. We're not passing it around tonight.
Is that in Robert's Rules of Order?
It is that I'm the leader of this meeting and that's the decision.
It's not in the Robert's Rules of Order. She can, she is perfectly, the Congress passes time over to one another.
We don't, sir.
Where does it say that, sir? Where does it say that?
I'm not going to argue about it. If she wants to speak, I will entertain her petition. I'm not going to allow everybody to pass theirs.
Why? Because you don't want to hear what I have to say, sir. That's what you don't want.
If you want to have a seat, I'll have the next.
This is on film. Here's what I'm going to, I'm going to leave it with this. This is on the official record. You all are in violation of the spirit and the letter of the DRD. That's on the official record. Can't say you didn't know now like you didn't know you didn't before, but surely you do now. And we'll take it from there because I'm telling you, this is not going away. It's not. A fuss is coming.
Have a seat, please. Don't point your finger at me, sir. Have a seat, please. Eddie Hamlin.
Eddie Hamlin, 106 West Moreland Avenue. And I see minds are made up so, and we can't let our spokesperson speak, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Lisa Tims.
Hi, I'm Lisa Tims and I live at 1028 Abner Creek Road in Greer. My husband and I are at Fulton Presbyterian Church. My husband's pastored that church for about 32 years and Christmas is a really special time of year. For Christians, we're celebrating the birth of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. God became man and dwelt among us. Jesus Christ is the God-man. He's fully God and fully man. And he came here to give life that whoever receives him might have abundant life. And everyone that receives Jesus as their Lord and Savior, repenting of their sins, turning away from their sins and putting all of their trust in the Lord to save them, will receive eternal life as they call on the Lord. And we have so much to celebrate and many of us here in this room enjoy and look forward to getting together with family at Christmas. And we miss those that have gone on perhaps, that have gone on perhaps more at Christmas than at other times of the year. I wanted to talk to you about two families that will be missing family members at their, at their table this Christmas and this is pertinent. I'm just trying to help you see that real people are suffering. A friend of mine who works with children at Abner Creek Academy lost her stepfather in a curve on Abner Creek Road when another driver hit the curve and overcorrected and hit his vehicle. Unfortunately, she was not even informed. She was at Abner Creek Elementary and this was just down the road, but she was not informed of him dying on the side of the road. Another situation that I mentioned here at City Hall is a child was killed on Abner Creek Road in the curves. The car that he was in feared off and, and he died and that family is missing that child, I'm sure, this Christmas. It's very sad. Abner Creek is a really, really busy road now. It runs parallel to 85 and so traffic, when it's backed up on 85, comes over on the Abner Creek Road. And that is really serious because we've got like, it's a two-lane road, there's no shoulder as you go through the curves that are near the hospital. And you've got 18-wheelers coming down that road. You've got, one of my son's therapists, she's a speech therapist, she was coming toward our church and met a big transport truck loaded with vehicles and he was not on his side of the road. And this happens frequently. You can talk to people that live where we are. There's gravel trucks that don't stay on their side of the road. There is a huge issue here. And we live right at the intersection of Abner Creek Road and Broughton McLeimman Road and when Broughton McLeimman is backed up at that intersection, then the fire department can't get through. We've already lost our garage. It wasn't at this time. It wasn't due to this situation, but we lost our garage there. We live right across from the fire station and had it been, had our garage been attached to our house, we would have had a serious problem because we probably would have lost our house too. And there were firemen at the fire station at the time. And, and firemen have reported to me that they've had trouble getting through there. And, and when Abner Creek is backed up and, or when Broughton McLeimman is backed up, when 85 is backed up and they can't get through to Abner Creek, the EMS serves a big part of Spartanburg County. The only other way for them to get through is the road that BMW is putting their big trestles across and that, you know, that's the only way they can get through. And that's really serious because like I say, they serve a big part of our county. I'm really concerned because I'm not, I know I'm not the only person that's brought safety concerns to y'all. Mr. Daniel Harrison, you probably recognize his name and, and his neighbors on Abner Creek Road united to fight against a small school that was to be located at the intersection of Abner Creek Road and Liberty Hill Roads due to traffic and safety concerns. And it's my understanding that a couple invested quite a little bit of money in that house at 1198 Abner Creek Road to prepare for a school. And I've spoken to the neighbors that fought against that house, that fought against this school and examined the minutes from the meeting where the determination was made not to allow this school. And right now, there's two different subdivisions that are in process right near that same intersection bordered on two sides by these exact, two same roads, Abner Creek and Liberty Hill Road, and nothing has been done to improve the safety of these roads. And the traffic is much worse. Okay, the traffic is much worse than it was at that time. These are the Sylvan Woods and Vines Creek subdivisions. We were not informed about the meetings. I asked for proof and this is the proof I was given and I can show it to you. It is not good proof, but we weren't informed until the final meeting. Now, if I got up and stood here now, there's, this process for this particular development is, is almost done, you know? And that's when we were informed was for the last meeting. And I have proof, this is what, this is what I was given here and this does not prove that we had, that we were informed. And my concern after being at the meeting last night and I heard them talk about trying to put more and more people into this area, when, when we've got problems with the rules not being followed already with regard to traffic being, roads being able to accommodate, I left horribly disheartened because I'm thinking, who's going to die next on Abner Creek Road possibly? Who's not going to be here next Christmas? It's very sad. People aren't hearing me when I come and talk about safety. I've done this more than once and people aren't hearing me. There's two more apartment complexes, one that's already built that I spoke against. They didn't hear me about safety there and another one at the, right at the hospital that's being built right near these curves. It's very serious.
Thank you. Counsel, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting from November 23rd, 2021. I'll entertain a motion if they be received.
Second.
Motion of second. Any items to note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Mr. Merriman, administrative report, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Very quickly, just a reminder that the City Hall offices will be closed December 23rd and 24th in observance of Christmas and again on January the 31st in observance of New Year's Eve. Merry Christmas to you, from your staff and from your administrator. Thank you.
I'd like to add a thank you as well to, to our Recreation Department for the work that they did over the weekend in regards to the rugby tournament and the preparation for that event. Went amazingly well. We had people from, how many states, Mr. Merriman?
Five, five different states, sir.
Five different states, teams representing five different states. Full house down there all day on, on Saturday despite the weather and then a good day on Sunday as well, too. Also hats off to Cultural Arts for their holiday fair, great event down there and lots of people going through there. I think that obviously will become the annual event if it isn't already. So just lots of things that are going on this time of year, both that we internally support and externally support as well. We'll move to appointments of boards and commissions. We've got the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. This comes to us, I believe, with the recommendation from...
Yes, sir, from, from Finance and I'll represent Finance tonight, sir. You'll have in your packet Finance's recommendations. There's two tonight that I want to make, make sure we're clear about before you, you vote. Mr. Andrew Carter's term, which expired 12/31 of this year. Staff is recommending that that position be replaced and this is in the appointed hospitality industry representatives with Ms. Jackie Rose of Sycamore Investments. So we are requesting that Mr. Carter be replaced with Ms. Rose. And you will also notice that all of the members of the committee are on the same term and staff is recommending staggered terms, beginning with a 2022 term. And as you'll see in your, your packet, we are recommending three-year staggered terms. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that is staff's recommendation.
Counsel, with the staff's recommendation and a note that Jackie Rose is replacing Andrew Carter and that we're going to go to the staggered timeframes on that, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
Motion of second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. We have one, and it's, I'm going to send cultural arts organization representative or if we, a cultural organization representative?
Is this number two Recreation Association? No, no, sir, this is, I'm sorry. So what you guys just voted on was the entire slate of candidates. So what you'll see there is the, the hospitality industry representatives and then the cultural organization representatives and then the public representatives. So that made, yes, sir, that made up the whole eight tax and then we'll move on to the second agenda item, which would be...
All right. Moving on to the Recreation Association Board of Trustees, Travis Ware's term expires 12/31/2021. Since we don't have our representative from District 2 with us tonight, we will hold that item over. Counsel, let us move to whole business, the first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 59-2021. This is an ordinance to adopt revised business license ordinance in accordance with the Business License Standardization Act, 2020 Act 176. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Some moved with an amendment.
Some moved with an amendment. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Now, floor is open for discussion.
The amendment that I have is the following. Understanding that the state business license legislation codified the definition of gross income, which includes revenues earned in non-business license taxing jurisdictions for domiciled contractors subsequent to the physical year end and that the, this inclusion of revenues did not allow contractors to modify their business model prior to the tax being due, I move that we amend ordinance 59-2021 to offer a one-year credit for the business license tax due, an amount equivalent to the tax paid on revenues earned in non-taxing jurisdictions. This will allow contractors to modify their business model to include the business license tax in their expenses for new jobs on which they will bid in subsequent years.
So they would pay it and then it would be credited back to them, or is it...
Yes, yes. For just this fiscal year, for the fiscal year that they're in.
Fiscal year 2022?
Yes, sir, for that, for that, that first fiscal year and the intent would be to credit back the revenues earned in the non-taxing jurisdictions. So in this case, the count, the unincorporated areas of the county where any work was done, that value will be credited back for one year.
Has staff done an analysis of what that would mean to us?
For us, it would be, staffs, we believe it would be negligible. Yeah.
Others?
And then starting the next year?
Next year, they would pay full freight. There would be no credit given.
For work, if they are located in the city, it would be for any work done?
Yes, sir. Either, either in a, within the city, the work done within the city or in the unincorporated areas where they're not charging a business license fee.
So if they did it in another municipality?
If they do in another municipality, the, the code itself or this ordinance itself covers that, that that doesn't count, that they've already paid it. But in the non-taxing entities, that's the credit that was given, that will be given. But it will only be for one year.
Are they required to have a business license in the other municipality if they're doing work or don't we provide some type of credit?
They're required to have a business license wherever they're working.
And so if they have the business license and pay the tax inside that other municipality, then they don't have to pay that?
That's right. That's right.
Others? Questions? Comments? Any further discussion in regards to second and final reading of ordinance number 59-2021? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second final reading of ordinance number 60-2021. This is an ordinance to change the spending classification of property owned by Napoleon Foster located on Valentine Lane from I-1 Industrial District to DRD. Ms. Cotty?
Hi, I do have two updates for you all based on the last meeting. Counsel asked for some clarification on the product, whether it would be for sale or for rent. And so staff did meet with the developer and applicant shortly after that meeting to discuss concerns that you shared. So the first update is that this product will be for sale. And then the second concern that counsel had was with the statement of intent around architectural standards. And so we did include an updated statement of intent in your exhibits tonight that does include a minimum of two building materials. So I'm happy to answer any questions and the applicants here as well if you have additional questions.
Second and final reading of ordinance 60-2021 comes with new and additional information. I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion.
Some moved.
Second. And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
What are the building materials specified?
So exterior building materials may consist of vinyl, hardy board, brick and/or stone. And then exterior building materials will have a minimum combination of two of the listed materials. And that's the...
Five percentage? Or you said you got to use two materials?
Just at least two.
I show a man, is the owner of the property with us this evening or representative of the owner of the property? If you'd like to address council, you can come to the podium. You'll state your name and address for the matter, as a matter of record.
My name's Blake Loudermilk. I reside at 304 Blackwood Store Road in Moore, South Carolina. And I am the executive vice president for land development for Lion J Holdings, which is the development company. We are the ones developing the property. So I'm happy to answer whatever you guys have and if there's any clarification needed on the, the materials question, happy to talk about that as well.
Mr. Arrowood?
The concern that, that I've had is that we specify in the development ordinance, okay, you've got to use different materials. And if they've done the same thing here and they said basically pick two, but they didn't, they didn't come back and say what percentage? What, what would be your intent of the elevations? What are they going to look like on the...
So typically for the home builder that'll be building these, it would have like a stone water line around the outside exterior. They typically also use stone on their columns, you know, up to a point 24 inches, 30 inches, whatever that may be.
And it's going to be stone on all exterior sides?
That's typically what they do, yes, sir. We haven't, we don't have architectures just yet on this project because we have to get through this process before we, we go to kind of the next step in our process. But, you know, we're happy to entertain, you know, whatever, you know, if there is a percentage you have in mind, I'd love to hear that. And granted, you know, we, we formalized this addition to the letter of intent based on other approved letter of intents that you guys have seen for other projects. So Claire Brook Frohawk is also our project, which is, I forget which road it's on now, but, so. Highway 14.
Others? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, no problem.
Floor is open for discussion.
Ms. Cotty, why did staff choose to go DRD on this specific project?
The applicant was requesting townhomes and currently in the ordinance under RM1 and RM2, the... one and RM two, the minimum lot size is thirty feet, and most townhome communities, that is too wide for products. That is something that we will be addressing in the Unified Development Ordinance, different zoning districts that will allow for attached single-family.
And a much broader discussion, I mean, I'm not saying that these guys will do it, but the way it is with their development plan is two materials, and if you're all, if it's a financial decision, you do the majority of the construction, finish it out with the cheapest exterior material, and then put up the next least expensive, which maybe that's just stone around the columns in front of everything else. That, that's, that's my own concern about the development regulation on this far material. I mean, I like the idea that we, we say, you've gotta use this, this, or this, and then you gotta narrow it down here to building materials, but...
I think there's some consideration in regards to this one, in terms of surroundings as well, too. I mean, I would agree that there are places that two might be insufficient, or that two might need to be named to be compatible with some of the other housings in that area, but it does seem to me that on this particular one, that given the, the, the look of the surrounding neighborhood and the materials used there, that it wouldn't be inappropriate. Others?
Yeah, no, that's, that, the materials, that's gonna be in the new zone, right? I'm gonna address that.
There may be requirements for, again, a combination of materials, but architectural standards are typically for like named historic districts, but we certainly can do, there are certainly some things that you can regulate.
I think one of the things that we can do is the illustrations in the palettes, in the different example drawings that we've seen in some of the workshops.
Yeah, one of the things I would love to avoid is there is a subdivision that is built out, and it is, it is a subdivision of townhomes, and when you're driving by, the nothing is front of the main road, so you get a couple of sides, and it's all vinyl. And, you know, if the vinyl is put on there properly, it doesn't give a problem, but, you know, if it's, if there's issues, you can see any kind of wave, and it just, it, that would be something in the UDO I think we need to address.
Others? Comments? Questions? Further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, this is the second and final reading of ordinance number sixty-one dash twenty twenty-one. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Jessica and Joshua Robinson, located at one nineteen Pine Street from R-12 Single Family District to the DRD review. I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions?
This is the one that was gonna have like the mother-in-law?
Yes, ma'am.
Mother-in-law, or something back behind?
Yes. Would you like to see the site plan?
Yeah.
Just confirming, Planning Commission did put in their recommendation to us that it was, would be family occupied only, correct? That was in there?
I don't believe that was in their official recommendation, but it is in the statement of intent that the owner must either reside in the primary or the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, so then it came to us with that?
Yeah, yes, sir. So that was included in the original statement of intent, and they agreed with that recommendation. Yes, sir.
Others? Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number sixty-two dash twenty twenty-one. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Claudio Marino Rios and Christian Hugo Rodriguez Viscava, located at twenty-two oh four Country Club Road from DRD to R-12. Ms. Cotty, newer additional information in that regard?
I do not have any information, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain, receive a motion?
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Comments? Questions? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number sixty-three dash twenty twenty-one. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Jeff Gossett, located at three hundred Mara Street from R-12 to R-10. Any newer additional information in that regard, Ms. Cotty?
No, sir. Happy to answer any questions, though.
To proceed with discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Floor is open for discussion. Comments? Questions? Mr. Mayor, I think you might remember about a year, year and a half ago, I mentioned how I was concerned about the appearance of Mara Street, and since that time, there's been a lot of improvements, and I think this is gonna be another. I would agree, sir. Others? Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number sixty-four dash twenty twenty-one. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Butch Sims, located at twenty-two twenty-four North Lion Street Extension from RM, which is multifamily residential, to R-five, which is Garden Court or Patio Home District. Ms. Cotty, any newer additional information in that regard?
No, sir.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
Now, the second home, will it have access onto the other street?
Yes, ma'am, so the first one will have access to North Lion Street. It's an existing driveway, and then the other one will have access to Bailey View Street.
Comments?
Mr. Mayor, I see that the owner is here. I'd just like for him to stand up and say hello. That's Mr. Butch Sims. We finished school together.
Is that the famous Butch Sims?
That's him, that's him.
That's him.
Thank you for being with us this evening, Mr. Sims. We appreciate it. Any further discussion in that regard? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we'll move to items of new business. The first is first and final reading of Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty. This is a resolution pursuant to Section four one one, one seventy-C Code of laws of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended, consenting to the placement of certain property within the corporate limits of the City of Greer and a joint industrial and business park of Spartanburg and Cherokee Counties. Mr. Reno Deaton, the Executive Director of the Greer Development Corp, joins us for that conversation. Mr. Deaton, the floor is yours.
Mayor and Counsel, good evening. Thank you, both items, one and two of new business this evening, our request to place property in Multi-County Industrial Park. This has become pretty standard fare with respect to the incentive agreements that we negotiate with respect to new industrial projects, a number of different benefits associated with Multi-County Industrial Park designation. The one I like to point out most often is that it provides an enhancement of the jobs development tax credit that actually encourages the developers to create jobs on these sites, qualify new jobs that meet the minimum wage threshold. This particular one, item one, is located on Freeman Farm Road. It's Becknell Development.
Mr. Deaton, are these, these two relative to a contractual matter that we need discussed in executive session this evening or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
Is this speculative development?
No, sir, there's a ten.
I'm not even gonna ask if there's questions, 'cause you know he's not gonna answer them, so.
How does it come about that, and you may have explained it when you were talking then, how does it come about that you would have, like, the City of Greer, I know we're partly in Spartanburg, but we're not remotely close to Cherokee County?
Yes. Great question. So initially, the Multi-County Industrial Park statute was identified for parks that were literally geographically on the county lines, and as times evolved, we've been able to craft this incentive to provide these additional benefits, namely job development tax credits, for example, special source revenue credit provisions. And so the statute has tracked that, but then requires that at least some portion of the revenue from the project goes to a partner in county. Usually, it's one percent. Spartanburg County traditionally partners with Cherokee County, Greenville County partners with Anderson County to provide this incentive. So one percent of the revenue will go to Cherokee County with respect to this project.
Is this manufacturing?
This is manufacturing, yes, sir.
Not, not logistics, not manufacturing?
Oh, I might be splitting hairs there, but...
The key split hairs?
Yeah, but the...
One's logistics, is one manufacturing.
Well, I think the key takeaway is, with respect to the jobs development tax credit, only qualifying new jobs receive the benefit, so they've gotta meet the minimum threshold of at least the county average. In Spartanburg County, I'm guessing a little bit, but I believe that's close to eighteen dollars an hour.
Others? Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. We'll move to the second, which is the first and final reading of Resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty-one. This is a resolution pursuant to Section four one one seven zero-C Code of laws of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended, consenting to the placement of certain property within the corporate limits of the City of Greer and a joint industrial and business park of Spartanburg and Cherokee Counties. Mr. Deaton, I would assume that upon your request, this is part of the reading that we did on Resolution twenty twenty-one. Any newer additional information?
Well, this is actually the same form of incentive. This is a different property. This property is actually the Carolina Commerce Park on Poplar Drive Extension.
Does that mean that Spartanburg and Cherokee's gonna move on in and take over?
No, I don't anticipate Cherokee to move in anytime soon, but they will get one percent of the revenue.
Lose all that free money. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
Poplar Drive Extension down near the, near the intersection of...
That's the Carolina Commerce Park. There's the two buildings. One is three hundred thirteen thousand square feet. Just had a great announcement today about Proterra locating there, and the other is a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty thousand square feet. There's currently a...
Which building is that Proterra's going into?
The larger of the two, the three hundred and thirteen thousand square foot building.
We already have, there already is a site there in that particular area where the building and business itself is not in the city, but then they annexed the back portion that fronts eighty with the intent of developing, and we put it in a multi-county industrial park. That's on the...
Not ringing any bells for me. This particular development, Carolina Commerce Park, this is a development of McDonald Development Group out of Georgia. They've built, additionally built two speculative buildings. I don't know that there's room on site for another building, although we've been working with them to find additional sites within the city, and this site is within city limits.
Proterra's in the city?
Yes, sir.
Kind of up on top of the hill there, as you get to the concrete building?
Yes, sir.
No, the one that I'm talking about, that where we put the Multi-County Industrial Park in the back area. What's, what's the road that dumps out?
Makes a circle up through there?
No, it's, it's where, what's the trucking outfit and all of that there? Over, you know, where it splits down there, and, I mean, in Pleasant Grove. Yes. But go to that next intersection, that's Poplar Drive Extension.
Poplar Drive in South Buncombe?
Yeah, if you take a left, where the road splits. Take a left and go back into town, come back into town, near that...
You may, you may be referring to, I mean, there's a good bit of development there at the South Buncombe, Poplar Drive Extension, intersection, groups like Ilgen are located there, and probably that, that's the project you're referring to, which coincidentally, which coincidentally also has gone to County Council with respect to an expansion. You checked out the newspaper recently.
Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Thank you.
Mayor Daner?
Yes, thank you. Counsel, in executive session, we have one matter this evening. I'll entertain a motion to receive. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the contractual matter pertaining to Project Chubbs, as allowed by State Statute, Section thirty dash four seventy-eight-two. Comes as a motion to hear a second. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Stand in executive session. Counsel, in executive session, we have had a discussion in regards to a contractual matter pertaining to Project Chubbs. We've taken no action in executive session. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session? And a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, any additional info, business before we adjourn?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to allow the city administrator to continue to negotiate and ultimately purchase fees of property related to Project Chubbs.
Comes as a motion to hear a second.
Second.
Any discussion in that regard? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, this is our last meeting of twenty twenty-one. Appreciate you joining us this evening, and hope you all have a Merry Christmas. Stand adjourned.